Good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna get started. We are on a very tight schedule today. So before I go through instructions, let's go with introductions. We'll start with our clerks and work our way around to the left.
Good afternoon. I am Alyssa Easton, Deputy Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon, Madison Little, Senior Admin, Clerk's Office.
Good afternoon. I'm Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell, and I have the honor of being elected by the people of District Six.
Good afternoon. I'm Laura Meyer, and I represent District Five.
Good afternoon. I'm George Dunlap, elected by the people of District Three.
Good afternoon. My name is Lee Altman, County Commissioner, serving at large, and I also have the privilege of serving as Vice Chair, and welcome to all our guests.
Good afternoon, and welcome to everyone that's here. It's great to see everyone. My name is Mark Jarrell. I've been elected by the people of District Four, and I also have the honor of serving as Chair.
Good afternoon. My name is Phil McGee Leek, and I represent the most powerful district in the county. That's District Two. Welcome. I know we're safe because all these policemen are in here. I know we're safe today. I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, and welcome. My name's Arthur Griffin. I have the pleasure of serving County Commissioner at Large.
Good afternoon, and welcome to everyone. My name is Yvette Townsend Ingram, also known as Commissioner YTI, and I serve you on the Board of County Commission at Large.
Good afternoon, Tyrone Wade, County Attorney.
Good afternoon, and welcome. Michael Bryant, Mecklenburg County Manager.
And then we'll hear from the executive team.
Dr. Kim Campbell, Deputy County Manager, Consolidated Health and Human Services Agency.
Good afternoon, Leslie Johnson, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon, Michelle Atri, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon, Derek Ramos, Deputy County Manager and Chief of Staff.
Good afternoon, Detective Cox, and Judge Director.
Good afternoon, Michael Riddler, Director.
Good afternoon, Ms. Ed, Public Information Director.
Sonya Harper, Director of Criminal Justice Services for Mecklenburg County.
All right, and I know we have a lot of guests, and certainly want to recognize all of you. What I'm gonna ask the presenters to do, as they present, I'm gonna ask them to recognize their team members, please, because we are on a time crunch. At this time, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everyone. Here's how we're gonna work today. Again, I'm gonna repeat that we are on a time crunch. There is a meeting that has been noticed that must take place at 4:00 PM. So I'm gonna ask the presenters with, so colleagues, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna hear from all the presenters. Presenters, I'm gonna ask you all to please stick to the slides so that we can move along, and then we'll take questions at the end, our usual format of taking questions, and we'll just move forward from there. I'm not sure who is going to present first. It's gonna be Sonya Harper, so I'm gonna ask the manager to recognize Sonya.
Sure, I can tee it up. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have one item on your agenda this afternoon. That is to receive an update on House Bill 307, also known as Arena's Law, which is set to go into effect on December 1st. We thought it was really important that you have an awareness of the local impact. So as a result of that, you'll be hearing from three individuals this afternoon. Sonya Harper will be kicking us off, who is the Director of our Community Justice Services Department, followed by Judge Wiggins, and then closing it out, closing us out will be Sheriff Gary McFadden. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sonya.
Thank you, Manager Bryant, and good afternoon, Chairman Jarrell, Commissioners. I do wanna recognize a number of folks in the room. I know Judge Wiggins will give formal introductions here in a moment, but I do wanna recognize that we do have our key court officials in the room this afternoon. But I also wanna recognize the members of my team at CJS, who are also joining us today. In the room, I have James Owens, who is the Pretrial Services Manager, Kasha Kyainchuk, who is the Research and Planning Manager. I also have our Management Analyst Calvin Johnson and Shannon Messer with the Research and Planning Unit also present this afternoon. So I appreciate members of my team being here today. As Manager Bryant had indicated, I am here this afternoon to give you an overview on House Bill 307, which is also known as Arena's Law, and here this afternoon to speak to you about the local impacts of the implementation of this piece of legislation. So just to give you a bit of a high, kind of an overlook here of just the primary components of the bill, and I'm sure that some of you have seen the, seen the components of this in the, in the press over the last couple of months. But the bulk of this piece of legislation does go into effect on December 1st, so that, of course, being this upcoming Monday. HB 307 makes a number of changes to pretrial release proceedings. It also adds a new aggravating sentence factor. It alters the way in which magistrates may be disciplined, and it also expands permissible methods of execution in the state. There are also a few other provisions with this. It also amends the procedures for involuntary commitments and how those are imposed and carry out. And then the other piece that's significant from Mecklenburg County is it does provide funding for 10 new full-time Assistant District Attorneys and well as five full-time legal assistants, and those positions are retroactive to July 1st of '25. The funding is attached to those positions, so total amount for the ADAs is coming in at a little over $1.6 million. And then total cost of recurring and non-recurring for the legal assistants puts us in at a little over $450,000. And again, those positions are retroactive to July 1st of this year. One of the other pieces here with HB 307 is it does create a new category of violent offenses. And so under this piece of legislation, it does identify, does define that any Class A through G felony that includes assaults, the use of physical force, the threat of physical force are essential elements to this offense. It also has very kind of clear language as, that any felony offense that would require registration as a sex offender is also now considered a violent offense under this legislation. And then it also includes a language there that any attempts to, to commit any listed violent offense also falls into this new violent offense category. So in essence, it's really just kind of broadening that definition. What you also find in HB 307 is some very specific language that calls out offenses tied to other pieces of statute here in North Carolina. And so what I have here is just a list here of some of those offenses that are identified in various statutes. Again, a lot of these do already fall through the A through G categories, so again, they've, they've always been considered to be violent offenses. But again, I just wanted to point out that this legislation does call out some specific offenses. The big piece here that will be a major impact to, here in Mecklenburg County, particularly to Criminal Justice Services, is a section pertaining to pretrial release. This here will also have a pretty significant impact on, on our other partners, particularly those that are magistrates, also with law enforcement, any of those folks that are involved in the, the pretrial process for an arrest. The language here, first, also, it identifies that in arresting law enforcement, a pretrial services program or a district attorney must provide a criminal history for judicial defendant. I will say for us at CJS, the work that we conduct already in this space is currently, we conduct public safety assessments as well as run criminal records for each person who is booked into the, into the Mecklenburg County Jail. So we fully intend to continue providing those records and the, the public safety assessments, again, for those booked into the jail. But this does expand, and again, requires that record to be run for each, each person who is arrested and presented at, at an arrest processing center. It also includes here, when that record is produced, it does require that a judicial official consider the full criminal history, not just the convictions, when they're setting conditions of pretrial release. And so again, that language there is a bit, a bit different. There is also a provision in HB 307, when considering pretrial release conditions, it does indicate that a judicial official must also consider a defendant's housing situation as part of those considerations for release. A couple of other highlights that are tied to the pretrial release, change of, pretrial release proceedings, is again, this legislation, it does eliminate the written promise to appear. There had been quite a bit of, of, you know, language out in the media talking about, you know, cashless bail. North Carolina, we've never really had cashless bail in our state, but written promise to appear is also, in a lot of states, referred to being released on your own recognizance. And so under this, effective on December 1st, that will no longer be an option here in North Carolina. The other changes here is it does not permit for the imposition of unsecured bonds or custody releases for any defendant charged with a violent offense. And so again, as I, on the previous slide, those offenses that fall there are under this new violent offense category. It also has a provision there for those that have been convicted of three or more offenses in the previous year, that again, an unsecured bond is, is not an option there. And the language in this, in the legislation does indicate that if a judicial official does indicate that pretrial release conditions would be appropriate, the statute now indicates that a judicial official must enter a written finding of fact. So again, just indicating those factors as to why they believe release would be appropriate. One of the provisions, though, also, within the legislation, it does have language there that indicates that pretrial supervision programming is still an option in jurisdictions where that is available. And so again, here in Mecklenburg County, again, in our Pretrial Services Unit, that is one of the functions of our team. So going back to the, the violent offenses that were listed earlier, there's also some very specific language there tied to pretrial release options for, again, violent offenses. The language there does include rebuttable presumptions against pretrial release for defendants charged with those violent offenses. So again, sort of the idea there is that if you are charged with a certain offense, that you are a, been automatically considered to be a risk to public safety and potentially a flight risk. And so again, sort of the, the provisions here really kind of are requiring folks charged with certain offenses to bypass initial appearance and then automatically be booked into the jail. And so again, there's a lot of heavy focus on those violent offenses there. The language does include, once again, that if a judicial official decides to, to allow pretrial release or that pretrial release is authorized, again, that judicial official is required to enter a written finding of fact. And so, and it's our understanding that, you know, the AOC is working on some forms and, and language and stuff for that new finding of fact form. But again, for these violent offenses, if pretrial release is authorized, the, the statute does indicate that either a secure bond or house arrest must be imposed in those, in those cases. So I wanna spend just, you know, kind of a few minutes to give you sort of a high-level overview of what are gonna be some of the local impacts. What are we expecting to occur once December 1st, it gets here? So I think the first thing is, is again, you know, with the violent offenses, and again, those requirements with certain offenses for folks to bypass initial appearance and be required to be booked into the jail, we are in fact expecting increased volume at the Arrest Processing Center, or at AP. Attached to this, obviously, is going to increase workloads in a few different spaces. There at Arrest Processing, we are, would expect increases in the magistrate workload. There are also some requirements with criminal record checks and things that will also come into effect with magistrates, which again, are just additional steps within the process. Also kind of tied to that, we are expecting longer delays at the, at the Arrest Processing Center for law enforcement officers. So again, just with that increased volume, it's gonna take our officers longer to have cases processed, arrests processed there at AP. For us at CJS, this also will increase our workload. So again, as I mentioned earlier, we do produce public safety assessments and criminal records for each person booked into the jail. Again, with the increased volume and the increased number of bookings into the jail, that increases the number of public safety assessments that we will be required to, to complete. I will share with you, for FY '25, we completed over 12,000 public safety assessments and ran over 12,000 criminal records. So again, this will increase our volume. And I will say, just kind of one of the other things with this is because of the, how broad some of the language is in here, it's really making it difficult for us to quantify what the impact will be, particularly that language about, you know, the three offenses within 10 years. So for us right now, we do anticipate an influx, but it's hard for us, again, to really kind of accurately project how, how large that influx will be. Also with this here, we do anticipate an increase in the jail population. I believe most of all of you are, do receive the jail, jail report from CJS each day. So I mean, right now, our jail is at functional capacity. If you're not receiving our jail report, we can certainly add you to there. But right now, our jail is at functional capacity. And so again, you know, there are some concerns about, you know, the influx and the increased number of folks that, again, with there being that requirement that some folks are gonna have to bypass initial appearance and be booked into the jail, again, that is gonna, we are anticipating the jail numbers to, to rise even further. Some of the other impacts as far as, you know, local justice system are concerned, this here, again, whenever jail bookings increase, that also increases the size of our first appearance dockets. So again, once a person is booked into the jail, they will have their first appearance before a district court judge. And so again, we are expecting the size of those dockets to, to increase. So again, that right there will increase the overall court workload. The other provision here that requires house arrest in certain instances and will also increase the number of persons being required to be placed on an electronic monitor. Here in Mecklenburg County, the CNPD is the provider of electronic monitoring. According, you know, to their leadership there, they are a bit concerned about this as well, because again, based on their current capacity for monitors, they are pretty close to that capacity already. And so again, you know, it's, again, hard for us to really kind of quantify the overall impact, but we know, you know, the influx is coming. So that is another area where we're really kind of paying attention to, to determine, you know, again, you know, how, how much this is going to impact a CNPD's electronic monitoring program. The other with this attached is we are anticipating our number of defendants that are supervised under the Pretrial Services Unit at CJS to increase. Again, there is specific language that does allow for the utilization of pretrial service programs in counties in which they exist. As you are aware, you know, here within Mecklenburg County, we do have, you know, eligibility criteria. There are, we're very kind of clear on there are certain offenses that we do not accept for supervision. But again, with the influx of individuals that we're anticipating to come into the system, we're also expecting a higher utilization of, of pretrial supervision in certain instances. The other piece I wanted to touch on is a section having to do with involuntary commitment procedures. The, originally, when the, the legislation passed, this section here was also slated to go into effect on December 1st of '25. However, Senate Bill 449 changed the effective date for the IV process to December 1st of 2026. So this right here is gonna give us a bit, a bit of time to prepare, which is a good thing, because this piece here is also going to be, is also gonna take some time and some work for us to build out, to be able to support it. So with the IVC commitment, IVC processes or involuntary commitment proceedings, under this section of HB 307, it does create a new pretrial release procedure that requires a judicial official to initiate an IVC automatically for any person, again, who's charged with a violent offense and have been subject to an IVC within the previous three years. And so, again, in addition to just that requirement, there's also, you know, that's also gonna impact, there's, there's gonna be a procedural step that's gonna be in there, because again, that's gonna require a search of a record to determine if an individual has had an IVC in the previous three years. The other piece with this, you know, IVC proceedings are to be initiated if defendant is charged with any offense and the judicial official has reason to believe that that defendant may be a danger to themselves or to others. And so again, this right here has some specific language to require IVC proceedings in, in certain instances. The other pieces attached to this IVC section is it does require a defendant to receive an initial examination by a commitment examiner to determine grounds to petition an IVC. I think, you know, again, the other piece about this part being delayed is that gives us some time to determine exactly how many examiners we will have available in Mecklenburg County to be able to conduct this piece. I will share with you, within CJS, within our Forensic Evaluations Unit, we do have four individuals who meet that qualification to serve as a commitment examiner. But again, we'll need to really sort of do a, a scan of the environment to determine the number of examiners there and also the number that would be willing to work with, you know, folks that are justice-involved. The other piece here also indicates that arresting officer must transport the defendant to a facility for that initial examination. And so again, that's extra burden on our law enforcement officers who will be required to transport folks that fall within this category to, to a facility. And so for the most part, those would be hospital emergency departments, crisis, crisis facilities. We're really trying to kind of dig in a bit there to get some clarification as to whether our forensics unit at CJS will be able to do some of those, to sort of alleviate some of the overall kind of pressure on the system. So again, it's good that we still have some time to, to work on this piece here. And then also in here, it does have language, again, that the commitment examiner, examiner must either petition for an IVC or provide a written notice to the court that there's no grounds for the petition. And so again, this is just adding, you know, it's adding to just the, the, the available capacity within, within, not only in Mecklenburg County, but across the state, so. But again, I can assure you that, you know, the partner, partners, we will be spending our time over the next, over the next year to really kind of try to prepare for this as most, best that we can. But also attached to this, I just also wanted to share that one of the things that, there is still kind of conversation now that's occurring with this, and one thing that, you know, we're monitoring closely, both, you know, myself and then also, you know, Lisette Nimmens, is the House Select Committee on Involuntary Commitment and Public Safety. And so this committee, again, they are, they had their first meeting about two weeks ago. Their next meeting is set for about mid-December, but they're really, you know, having some conversation about the IVC process. I will share from the meeting they had a couple of weeks ago, there were a lot of, you know, professionals and academics who were able to come in and speak to members of the House about the process. But at the same time, there were also members of folks there who have had direct experience with the IVC process, like in their professional capacity or previous professional capacities. And so, you know, there was a real good mix of conversation about, you know, again, what's on the books and how things are actually applied. So we're gonna continue to monitor that, to see if there are, in fact, any sort of recommendations for change that may come before December of '26 on this section. But Representatives Hugh Blackwell and Timothy Reader are the individuals who are co-chairing that select committee. All right, and I will stop there if there are any questions.
Colleagues, we're gonna listen to all the presentations and then take questions at the end, so.
First of all, thank you all for having us. I wanna first recognize the key court officials that are here. On the front row is Sheriff Gary McFadden is with us today. On the back row, we have Honorable Clerk, Honorable, our Clerk of Court, the Honorable Liz Chin Gary is with us today. Next to her is our Trial Court Administrator, Casey Callaway. I also see DA Spencer of Meriwether. And then over, kind of hidden over there, is our Public Defender, Kevin Tully. And we meet monthly, and we have discussed this law and its impacts in some detail, along with other details we discuss on a monthly basis. I have a handout with you that I gave you, and I will tell you, I'm going to have to pivot. Ms. Harper did a wonderful job of outlining the law, which I was planning to do. But I do think there's things I can highlight about things that I see as impacts on our court system. First of all, let me say that we have met with our judges, the magistrates have met with my lead magistrates, and the lead magistrates are meeting with their folks. We feel prepared for Monday. Now, when we say that, there's probably, obviously, going to be some hurdles along the way that we have to adjust to as we kind of roll into this new law on Monday. As for us in the court system, we do our first appearance, first is gonna be Monday morning. The magistrate's office starts 12:01 AM on Sunday night. So it all starts for them there. A couple of things I wanna highlight after Ms. Harper's presentation, however, some of the key provisions that are major, that I see is major changes that have, that could potentially have impact on the county. One of which she's obviously touched on is the increase in jail population, which is definitely going to be affect, affected by the, the elimination of a written promise to appear, or what used to be called "release on your own recognizance." Basically, that's just been eliminated by the law. That's not an option anymore. There has to be some sort of either secured bond or unsecured bond, depending on the case. As Ms. Harper indicated, there's certain offenses that secured bonds or there's unsecured bond is, is no longer an option, particularly those that are considered violent offenses. And I think that the, the slide she had referenced 15A 533 or 531 that defines the violent offenses, that increases some things to that level, some misdemeanors that were not on that list to start with, including stalking and, and things related specifically to domestic violence, such as breaking and entering with intent to terrorize or injure, injure, injure the occupants therein. Most of these felonies, if you look at the old 15A 533B1, were, the judge had discretion. The, the first appearance judge had discretion, for, for instance, on a murder charge or a shooting into occupied property charge, or any of those charges that are listed under those violent offenses, most of them, that gave the judge discretion to hold someone without bond. And there written, wasn't really any findings that the judge has to make on that. That's changed, and, and Ms. Harper emphasized this, that there is now a presumption in place for those violent felonies, the A through G and what's been defined as violent felonies, that there are no statutory, there are no conditions of release that can assure the safety of the community or the flight or, or the return of the defendant to court. And so there's now a presumption, but it's rebuttable. I see Mr. Tully's here, and that's gonna be a very difficult position for someone who's first arrested, to rebut a presumption a day or two after they're arrested, to present that presumption. That may be, something has to be addressed later on. I'm not sure. I'm not saying it can't be done, but I think it does. That's something that I think is going to cause an increase in our jail population, that there's... Instead of setting, for instance, let's say someone comes in on a first-degree arson case, instead of setting what would typically be a secured bond, even sometime a high-dollar secured bond to assure their condition, there's now presumed that we, that no amount of money or no conditions of release will protect the public in that situation. It's presumed. Again, it's rebuttable, and it has to be rebutted by the defense. Again, at first appearance, we're fortunate here, we have a, the public defender comes into, we have the public defender's office in first appearance. A lot of jurisdictions don't have that. However, the public, in their defense, our assistant PDs and PDs will not have an opportunity to meet with each of those clients prior to, to court to be able to address those matters. So I think that's going to be a significant impact. I think a couple of other significant impacts that we see are that when a judge does make a decision that pretrial release conditions are appropriate, it is required that written findings must be made. In the past, if you unsecured some bond's bond or let someone out on pretrial conditions, the opposite was true. You are to make written findings on a secured bond. But now you're the most, in addition to that, we're to make additional findings explaining why release is appropriate based on the factors that were put out. And that is required in the failure to do so, particularly for magistrates. Ms. Harper emphasized this. It creates a new, failure to do those written findings is the base, is a basis for suspension of a magistrate, and it gives the Chief Justice the power to do, to, to initiate that proceeding, which used to be solely the purview of the Chief District Court Judge. And so that changes that, changes that procedure. Another additional, I think, highlight that she touched on, I think is important to talk about, and this is gonna affect a lot of misdemeanor cases, more so than just felonies. If, if there's three convictions of a Class I misdemeanor or higher within 10 years, there must be a secured bond, and it may require electronic monitoring. We've already talked about the increase of, potential increase of electronic monitoring and its impact on CNPD and the resources available and what would happen if those resources are extended. My understanding is there's going to be some responsibility on the county if CNPD uses all of their resources that they have for the, for those. So those written findings requirements are important for judges. They're important for legislatures, and the failure to do so could potentially be a problem, particularly for the magistrates that could possibly face removal by the Chief Justice. As far as the mental health provisions go, I'm, those are, for right or wrong, it's gonna make our transition a little more, easy, a little more, we're gonna be able to move into it a little more smoothly, ease into that a little bit without that provision. That bridge may be important to the safety of the community, but as far as just preparing for this, it does give us a little bit of leeway to move into, to, to adjust to the new provisions without having to adapt to that. I do... I do think that those matters are still optional for law enforcement and for magistrate and judges to do, it's just not required at this time. Another big impact that Ms. Harper touched upon is the review, which is important, and we, we get criminal histories in court, we can ask for them. I know as a judge, I'm one of our first appearance judges, I often, if the pretrial services does a good job of providing us with information, but sometime, based on time and the limitations that they have, we don't always have them, the DAs are able to provide, the ADAs are able to provide the criminal histories. However, it is now required that we review those, and again, we typically review convictions. Now we're supposed to review the entire criminal history, which can include arrests that did not lead to convictions, and so that's important to consider. And it's, it is the requirement of the DA, of the judge to do that. I think that, again, I indicated I would probably have to cut this short, given that my, most of my presentation was intended to talk about the new law, which has mostly been done. So I know it's short and sweet, but I think Ms. Harper did a great job of giving you what the, what the new law entails, the changes of the new law. To me, the highlights in the changes of the new law are the definition of violent felonies and the increase of, and the addition of some misdemeanors into the, into those. The presumptions that are now, that were currently discretionary under a judge's purview are now presumptions that a judge must hold someone without any conditions of pretrial release if those, if that presumption is not met. And then the, I think another big one that I think is going to have a major impact is the three or more convictions of a class A1 misdemeanor or above, because that's not infrequent in our court system that we see folks come through, particularly, I do a lot of the domestic violence first appearance, it's not infrequent that we see, you know, two, three or more convictions of domestic violence-related items, which are class A1 misdemeanors. And so that's going to have an impact as well. The increased impact, increased use of secured bonds is going to leave a lot more folks in custody, which is going to put a lot of pressure on Sheriff McFadden and on the county's resources. And I, I know that you, that this commission in this county is working hard to ensure that we are able to accommodate that. But I'll save any future time for questions at this time, unless you have any now.
We're going to hold off, Judge, and then
Thank you, Commissioner Jarrell.
We'll come back, and everybody will answer.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, Jarrell and County Manager Bryant, thank you all for having us. My staff will quickly announce who they are, and we'll move right into this.
[inaudible]
Mari, Quest State Public Information.
Sarah Masory, Public Information Manager.
Anthony Durrow, Facility Commander.
Tanisha Pocanayavon, Mental Health Director.
Major Officer, AV and Rest Processing.
Andre Nalton, Business Management for the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you all. We're going to run through it because we said that we are limited. So most of the people who have spoken, and we will also speak, most of these going to be from paper. And what I mean, they're speaking from an aspect of paper and function of the criminal justice system. We're going to be functioning 24 hours a day. It's not nine to five to us, and it's not paper, and it's not numbers to us. These are going to be people lives that we are going to be entrusted with even more. The main part is that we're going to be the man corporate of all of this in 307, and of course, it was created because of a stabbing on a bus light, I mean, on a light rail and the law. We had no input, no impact, I mean, no input, whenever invited to a meeting to even think about how could this work through our system. So we're just coming on the tail end of it. So the current state of the detention center is those numbers are going to change each time you see 1560, now it is 1580. We fluctuate every night between 70, 75 people coming in and 50 going out, and that's the fluctuation of our detention center on an average of every day. We cannot tell Pineview, Matthews, Mint Hill, and anybody else how to not to arrest somebody, so they're going to be in and out of the facility. A lot of times, we, we don't understand when we talk about logistics, everybody in our detention center does not, can be housed together. It is by classification, and classification sometimes is a very big burden. Also, we're going to talk about the jail capacity. When you heard Mrs. Harper say functional capacity, we are at 85% functional capacity today, but we are 99% operational capacity. So this is why you may see the issue about the word stack of bunks. Stack of bunks is where we have to put people on these bunk beds, and their families will call in and say they are sleeping on the floor, but they are not actually sleeping on the floor. They're actually on what they call a stack of bunk. So the, the capacity challenge in the guidelines, we don't have guidelines. We don't have any guidelines of how this is going to work. We can hear what they're going to do outside of the detention center, but what are the guidelines inside a detention center? We were not given any guidelines for inside a detention center. At this time, of course, we have 73 people in what they call stack of bunk. Again, that is people that are, are sleeping on a cart mattress style bunk. So when people say that they are on the floor, they're not actually on the floor, they're on a bunk. And the reason that they're on the bunk, because of capacity, operational capacity, functional capacity, and also classification. And of course, that is a problem because we're going to hear from a lot of people calling us. Staffing and mental health, we believe that we can handle the mental health part in providing this resources, but do we have enough staffing to provide the resources? We have enough staffing to provide the current resources now, but we know that it is going to increase, and will we have enough staffing to help our men and women who are coming to us, broken, confused, and child, and mental health challenges? We have a great mental health staff, and we will probably see, talk about that a little bit more in a few minutes. And here we are. And so believe it or not, we created the first mental health pod in North Carolina with no additional fundings. We just created it. When I came, we had one year for men, one year for women, and it was very successful in dealing with mental health before it became popular. We would deal with it in 2019, and it really, really worked, and the state of North Carolina then asked us to do a little bit more. I think that, a little bit more, and this is the little bit more, the RISE program. The RISE program is restoring individually, safely, and effectively. So in the middle of COVID, the state of North Carolina came to us and said, hey sheriff, since you did such a good job, or your staff did such a good job on mental health, can we do an experiment? So the experiment was taking on a 25-bed unit to deal with just the people in Mecklenburg County, only in Mecklenburg County. We dealt with them so successfully, now we have what they call RISE 5.0, I double name 5.0. So what the RISE program does now for us in Mecklenburg County is, well, that's one slide, a couple of slides missing. So what they did with the Mecklenburg County now, that 36 other sheriff's offices in North Carolina now can bring their persons who are mentally challenged to the Mecklenburg County Detention Center for service of mental health, before the law started. So what does that mean? If I was another sheriff, and I had all these problems inside my detention center and don't know, and I didn't get any additional funding, I don't have the staff, and I definitely don't have the mental health staff to combat what the state has put on us because of this new law, why don't we just send them to Mecklenburg County? Why? We've already signed a contract with them previously before the new law came, way before the new law came. So we have a contract with 36 other counties' sheriff's offices who now can send their people to us to restore their capacity so they can go to court in their county. I hope you understand that. So we're serving 36 other counties under the RISE program now. And so when we talk about the other challenges, we're talking about recruiting and retention. You have to understand, we do a great job in recruiting and retention, but the way that most people talk against law enforcement these days, young people do not want to come to law enforcement. And also, you're talking about the largest sheriff's office and the largest police departments in the state operating within Mecklenburg County, myself and CNPD, but we also have to compete with the outer agencies, Union County, Gaston County, and all. And we can't, you know, rule out Huntersville, Matthews, Mint Hill, and all the other seven that are in Mecklenburg County, competing for the same pool of people, but now we are competing against Monroe, because their starting rate is different from ours. And so we're going to also talk about, how do we retain these people, but they are going to be pulled away to other counties. The rest processing, which I didn't see a slide for, the rest processing, as they say, is going to increase. It's going to very much increase each and every day of the demands, starting December 10th, I mean, December 1st. But we also have to remind you that we are still fighting a House Bill 318, which is the immigration bill. And so what happens with the immigration bill, after a judicial official, a magistrate, has deemed that a person has fulfilled all of their obligation to be released from the Mecklenburg County Detention Center, House Bill 318 now mandates us to hold them an additional 48 hours. So after a magistrate signs the release, they will be held inside the detention center for an additional 48 hours, and that is going to cause some cumbersome more problems if we dealing with all these other people that we have to have inside and outside. And when we talking about IVC orders, we will be responsible for the transportation as it stands now. And additionally, most people do not recognize this, but my deputies take care of people back and forth to the hospital each and every day because of their medical conditions that they have to have treated. So all of that is on top of the law and also the immigration, immigration bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. I'm going to ask all the presenters to come back to the podium, because we are going to open it up for questions. And as we take questions, if, if colleagues, if you'll point out whoever you're directing the question to, that would be helpful. Who all has questions? We'll start with Commissioner Dunlap.
Can you come back?
Sure, absolutely. Commissioner Valley, answer. Did I say your hand?
Eventually.
Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the presumption of success, given the increase of ankle monitors, misdemeanor increase, written finders, findings, increased secure holdings, some impact on county CNPD and county staff, 10 assistant DAs, transportation from jails to, to commitment or forensic evaluations, what, is there any impact on the clerk of courts in terms of more files that you presented? Chief District Judge indicated that you may be conducting more, more hearings, and jail population is going up. So, but no one's, I mean, the sheriff talked about additional resource, nobody else kind of talked about resources. So help me in those different areas, Judge and Sheriff and Ms. Harper. What do you, what do you see to be successful, if the presumption is to be successful? Because otherwise, we're going to have a perfect storm of a big problem. So rather than just ignore it, is the elephant in the room, you're going to need more resources, and what those resources are, because this is simply another state mandate coming down to the county that we're going to have to fund. So if, if we're going to have to fund, just tell me now so we can get ready for our budget process in January. So help me.
Let me start by addressing something you just said, Commissioner Griffin, about the, the impact on the clerk's office. Now, Ms. Chin-Gary is here, probably has a better idea of that than me, but I can tell you that, I say it every day in court, and I will continue to emphasize that as much as we talk about things we do and its impact on us as judges and our DAs and our PDs and everyone, we can't function without the clerk's office. They do a great job. They've shepherded us through the change to electronic filing. This is going to be another increase on their workload with the additional requirements of the, when the judges are saying written findings and that, processing that paperwork, getting that into the file, making sure that it's documented. As far as needing additional resources, I'm sure Ms. Chin-Gary, I don't want to speak for you, ma'am, but I'm sure she could always use additional resources, but I think the impact on the clerk's office is going to be significant, and, because they, they are very hardworking staff now, and I think it's going to increase their workload a good bit. I might defer to others on what we see. I think what we see as success is if we can, I don't know how to answer that, Commissioner Griffin. I do think success to me is going to be that we navigate this first few weeks and see how we do, starting Monday, December the 1st, navigate through it, see where we stand. I'm hoping that our judges and our magistrates are prepared. I feel like we are.
I think if I could, I will go ahead.
Funding, we use the word loosely about resources, funding and bodies, personnel. That's what we're going to have to have, funding and personnel, and that of what, to, to attempt to achieve success. The clerks and the judges all going to have additional issues, hearings, just the hearings alone of his capacity. Like I said the other day, we have people inside Mecklenburg County Detention Center today has been waiting for six years, not because of the system, but because of the entire, not just one system, but the entire system. But when I say that while we have to deal with it, we are dealing with the physical person. And so we're going to need personnel, and we're going to need funding, because our people who eat inside do not eat the same thing, and you're talking about funding for additional medical, and we haven't even talked about the mental capacity of functioning, to give them the resources that they need, and then transporting them to these additional hearings beyond what we transport now.
And I would just say, for criminal justice services, I mean, there will definitely be an increase in need of resources to be able to support this. Internally, as we've been really taking a look and trying to prepare, we do anticipate that, you know, we will need additional resources within the pretrial services unit, and potentially within the forensic evaluations unit also, depending on how things, if, depending on how things kind of fall with the IVC process, you know, next year. I think, you know, it's a, it's a bit hard for us to really say right now exactly how much more that we would need, or what, you know, how many more positions or things we may need, because as I mentioned earlier, right now, as the way things are written, it's very difficult for us to quantify the impact. I will say, I, you know, as we and as Judge Wiggins had indicated, the next couple of weeks are going to be, they're, they're going to be, they'll be exciting. But I think by the time we get to the end of February, early March, where we are at that point is probably going to be pretty close to where we're going to be for the long haul. And so I think at that point in time, we'll be able to really provide some more specifics as to what the resource need may be.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone, for your presentation. I've got, like, literally two categories of questions that I know cannot be answered here today, and a lot of them have to do with data. So really, one of my first questions is, what, what recourse do we have as policymakers and advocates to fix the glaring loopholes that we see? Because we already know that criminal justice, there are so many injustices that contain racial, ethnic, all of those biases. What recourse do we have now here today to, to lobby to fix those, or do we have any recourse to fix those problems? That's my first question, and I'm not sure who to direct that to. My second question, and please just forgive my ignorance, what is the difference between when CNPD houses and arrests for something versus the sheriff's office? And how do you, I mean, so does CNPD do the arrests, but you do the, the housing of the detainees, or how does that work?
CNPD does not house anyone.
Okay.
We house everybody for CNPD.
Okay.
Cornelius, Huntersville, Matthews, Pineville, Davison, we, we house everybody. So we are the only people that does, does the housing.
Okay, that explains a lot. Okay. And then
And the policy issue, if you can find a policy that will help fill vacancies, and you find a policy that, that produces funding, that is what the sheriff needs.
Okay.
Policies don't fill vacancies. Policies don't fill funding.
So that leads me to my next question. If we had numbers about, on average, how much it costs based on, like, what you were talking about in the categories for feeding an inmate who has medical challenges or mental challenges, what does success mean? When you said the RISE program has success, has been successful, what does success mean? How many people have been, the fact that How many people have been, the fact that we're talking about success and people being incarcerated is just, the oxymoron is ridiculous. But what does that mean? What does success mean with the RISE program?
Success means that I have half of the people inside my detention center. If we, we cannot tell people not to arrest anyone, but the community has to have an input that people don't continuously come to jail to be incarcerated. We haven't looked at, how can we decrease that? That will decrease my workload, that would decrease their workload, and that definitely will increase the courthouse workload. We have to tap into the community. How can we be a better community and provide the services so people will not continuously come to jail to be incarcerated?
We need to know how much that would cost per person, like, how many people...
We can give you a number later.
Yeah, I'm saying, I have a list of questions that I'll just have to email or whatever.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for your presentations. I mean, I'm almost speechless about the impacts to, across the board here. And I know that, you know, we can't function without our clerks, and so I know, like what you were saying. But my question is around, you know, have you guys already figured out mathematically, like, what this is going to look like? Because you already know how many folks would, like, were you able to measure while this thing was being passed? You know, based on your records, what would your population look like at this point if this law had been in place, you know, for X number of months? I'm just wondering if you have an emergency overflow plan already? Like, where are the folks going to go? If it's like 20% more people, 50% more people? I just would love to know if you have a quantifying number on, you know, what you expect.
Let's say, and as I mentioned earlier, it's difficult for us to really, you know, again, quantify and put a number on it right now. What I can say is when we have looked at some of, you know, some different data points, at different touchpoints of the system kind of leading up to this, one of the things that we took a look at was, you know, the number of bookings that have occurred into the Mecklenburg County Jail in FY '25. That number sits close to about 22,000. So, you know, again, we know, that's what we had last year, but when we look at the provisions within this new piece of legislation, we know that, again, with written promise to appear no longer being an option, with, again, there being a new category of violent offenses that will require people to, again, bypass initial appearance and be booked into the jail. When we look at, again, those individuals that have had three or more convictions within the 10-year period, that is, that's a very significant number. And like Judge Wiggins had indicated, we see that a lot, but it's very hard for us to kind of filter that down through the data sets right now. But, so, I mean, it will be upwards of 22,000 individuals presented at the Arrest Processing Center. Because, again, that was what was presented in FY '25.
So you're saying it could double the amount of folks?
I think that's what's, well, I don't know if I would go so far to say double, but we're anticipating it could potentially be significant. Because, again, you know, this is really limiting judicial discretion.
Right.
And so, again, there are going to be requirements that some people will have, there will be no option but to book some individuals into the jail.
Okay. Before I run out of time, can I just add to my question a little bit? Because I don't, I don't want them to ding me here. Also, my other question was about the suspension of magistrates and how is that going to affect everything? And so we know that at this point, this is an unfunded mandate that's kind of coming in the middle of a year. But is there any, is there going to be any funding? Have they said anything about future funding for the next fiscal year or anything? Or is this all completely being put on Mecklenburg County?
I understand you have a budget.
Oh, yeah.
I don't have, there's been no discussion of any additional funding. If I can quickly address the magistrate issue, my hope, one of my top, one of our top magistrates is here today, Mr. Basile, my hope is that's not going to be an issue, that all of our magistrates and our judges will follow the written findings requirements, which would eliminate the need for the chief justice to remove, or start removal proceedings, start removal proceedings against a magistrate. That's my hope.
So there will not be funding. There will not be, from my understanding, no funding coming. If you go back to the 48-hour hold rule for the House Bill 318 to hold and undocumented, presumably undocumented immigrant for an additional 48 hours at the cost to the Mecklenburg taxpayers at $398 per hold, that cost is on you now. So we're not looking to get a cost. When you're talking about numbers, when this law was mentioned, only mentioned, our population went up 118 at, just the mention of it went up 118, and it was the highest that it has ever been, as me being sheriff, at 1609. That's 1,609 people being housed inside a detention center. So that's just the mention of it that caused that increase.
Wow.
Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, thank you very much. That was my big question, was it being an unfunded mandate. I just really want the public to understand, and I just want this to be honed in on, that we're being forced to do all this without money from the state, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so I'm assuming that in our, as the budget cycle starts, this is going to be something that we're going to be seeing. We're going to be seeing your request rise a little bit, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make...
I want to mind you, of course, today we're discussing this House Bill legislation and the fiscal impacts. You're kind of shifting to the fiscal discussion, but mind, be mindful that you're going to have other competing needs as well to support your priorities also. So I just want to manage your expectations and be mindful that as you provide feedback and direction and guidance, that this is just one piece of the larger pie as well.
Thank you for that. 100% agree with that because, I mean, our priorities are going to be cut into because of this. I just really want the public to understand that. Sonya, on slide number six, you says, it says judicial officials required to consider defendant's criminal history, not just a record of convictions. So right now, it's just a record of convictions?
So yes, and I can defer to Judge Wiggins with that, but currently, yeah, a judicial official takes in consideration the prior convictions of an individual. This here requires, you know, to take the entire record into consideration, which includes, you know, times that a person may have been arrested, but there was no conviction. So even if an arrest was made and the charge was dismissed, that still has to be reviewed as part of the record. Now defer to Judge Wiggins for...
Well, I, we serve Monday, I handle the domestic violence first appearance and handle, I cover first appearance, a lot of judges that cover first appearance. It is not, there are factors that are considered outside of the convictions. For instance, the, if there's pending charges, in other words, if someone has been arrested on a charge and they pick up a new charge, that's very, usually the district attorney, and it'll be on the pretrial report that they have these X number of pending charges. I think most of our judges, including myself, takes that in consideration now.
Okay. And what about requiring a defendant's housing situation to be considered? If the person is homeless, what, I mean, what is, so what...
You know, I don't think that, I think we, that that's typically discussed, that particularly now that we have, we have an advocate in the courtroom in the public defender's office, they'll mention that the person is potentially unhoused. How that impacts, impacts the decision of each individual judge, I can't answer how they'll handle that in their discretion. I have been always impressed with our public defender's office, when we have someone who's unhoused, we have an assistant PD sitting in court who indicate that they will work with their social worker in their office to help them find resources that are available to help them find appropriate housing.
Okay, that, thank you, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Dunlap.
Thank you. As I listen to the presentation, everywhere I look, I see increased funding requirements. Requiring the defendant to receive an initial examination by a commitment examiner, and the arresting officer must transport the defendant to a facility for initial examination. The police department is not here, but I can imagine that is going to have some impact on the police department, and they are also understaffed. I see a backlog happening as a result of these arrests, not being able to move people out of the system. One of the things that concerns me now is the fact that we worked really hard for years to reduce the jail population. And so now, as you discuss being at capacity, are we talking about the jail in terms of the space that you can use? Are we talking about our ability to expand capacity based on the facility itself?
Well, we could, we could take, it goes that if we have a room, we have to have somebody in that room. So if we have a pod, we have to have a body in that pod. And that body needs to be four times, because we have four different shifts. So each dorm or dorm or pod room has to have a body. So when we talk about capacity, we could deal with it, but we have to have the staff to manage it. And so it goes both way with us. And we do have to look at homelessness, because this time of year, a lot of people come to the facility. We also have to look at what they said, houselessness or homelessness. Last week, we evicted 280 people out of their homes. And so we have to look at that population that is also, may come inside with mental health issues. And so all of that, we have to look at the big picture of it. Because Mr. Brown, who was there, when we look at our numbers, if we keep all those people, 618 people had the same diagnosis that he did on that train that day, the same diagnosis. So 680 people inside that building are the same person. So we dealing with all of that. But when these people are recognized now with a significant mental health challenge, they're still going to be in our custody and care.
And the impact of having eliminated one of the five ways of bonding, how significant is that going to be?
I don't know that, at least I don't see that being used a lot, the written promise to appear a lot. I think it was used on a minimal basis, and it was obviously used in that previous situation that Sheriff McFadden just talked about. I think the elimination of one of the tools should, there's no way it's not going to have an impact on the increased population. I think this whole thing is going to, this whole bill is going to retroactive, well, not retroactively, the whole impact's going to have increase on Sheriff McFadden's responsibilities and the county responsibilities to house folks.
I will say the one thing, since you had mentioned the previous efforts to really kind of monitor the jail population in Mecklenburg County, the one thing about this, too, is it really kind of runs counter to a lot of those efforts. Because here in Mecklenburg County, we've always had a heavy focus on, really have had a risk-based system, where we're looking at a person's risk to our public safety, the person's risk to reoffend, a person's risk to, you know, fail to appear for a court appearance. And so, you know, decision-making has always been within that vein. This piece of legislation is very charge-based. And so, again, it's just the way that it's designed, it does run counter to a lot of those efforts that have been underway here in Mecklenburg County for nearly 20 years now.
Commissioner Holt.
Thanks to everybody who's here today. You know, our first duty, the state, federal government, local government, is public safety. That is our first obligation. And yet, I was just confirming the statistic, my understanding is the state of North Carolina has allocated a paltry 2.8% of the state budget to the criminal justice system. And, you know, Sheriff McFadden said, you know, how do we decrease workload? How do we prevent people from continuously coming to the jail? And we know that a huge part of the jail population does have mental health issues. And so this is really something that we need to think about on a bipartisan basis. We want to be safe, all of us. And we need to do that by having the resources to prevent tragedy. And we also want to be, we don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish. It is more expensive to send someone to an involuntary commitment setting than it is to give people mental health care on the front end. And it's also a lot less humane in terms of wasted, you know, opportunity and aspirations of all of our people to reach their highest potential. So I hope that on a bipartisan basis, we can talk to each other and to our representatives about the need to strengthen our mental health system and to strengthen our criminal justice system. Because 2.8% of the budget to provide our most important obligation of public safety is clearly not enough. And I'm super, I'm very grateful for the additional district attorneys and legal assistants that the General Assembly did allocate, but that's just one dimension of the impact of this law. And all the other, there's so many other dimensions that you've talked about today that are not getting any extra funding. And we have no way to meet that obligation. So I guess before my time runs out, I would like to know, you know, if someone is involuntarily committed, is that to a emergency department? Or what sort of facility will people go to if they are on, get an IVC order?
So, yeah, so when an IVC is issued, typically that person will go to a hospital or to a crisis facility. And so that would remain the same here. And I think, yes, to your point, I think there was a definitely significantly missed opportunity for a conversation about mental health and what the needs are with behavioral health in general, amongst the justice population. I think, you know, the thing here that is missing is that there is not direction or provisions or resources for the continuation of care beyond the IVC. So when a person is involuntarily committed, typically that's a relatively short period of time, because an IVC is typically issued if a person is in crisis. And so if there appear to be a danger to themselves or to other people. And so, you know, again, even if someone is, if they are deemed to be, a petition is indicated for, or is issued for them to be committed, that period of commitment is usually a relatively short period of time. And again, unless they're connected with a clinical home, or there is a step in that process to make sure they're connected upon the, upon release, you know, again, folks are, still will go without services most likely.
Let me add that, when you're talking about an IVC order that is going to be taken to a facility by a Mecklenburg County detention, I mean, Mecklenburg County detention officer, armed, or a detective, I mean, or a deputy. The continuation of care is still going to be in our care. We have to understand that. They may not get any more additional mental health care, which that probably won't happen if they're in my facility. But imagine after that IVC order, and they deem them all right to be released, he still, he or she still comes back into the care of the Mecklenburg County Detention Center. So we have to still provide additional care, because that person is still waiting to go to court and go for a hearing. So no matter what happens, they're still in our care until they are released in court.
Thank you. Commissioner Leake.
Let me first say thank you for coming and being a part of this discussion today. The problem I'm having is how do we disseminate this information to the general public so they can understand what's happening? My concern is the legislators are not prepared legally to be writing a law that they are not lawyers or judges in the process. So my concern is how do they come up with this bill without the proper information from those who deal with it versus those who have to implement the process? The legislators, how did you do it?
Well, I obviously can't speak on behalf of our legislative leaders. I can tell you, as a member of the judicial branch, I take that very seriously, and I take our responsibility as a judicial branch to execute what the legislative branch has asked us to do. We're, I mentioned the funding difference that we have for a co-equal branch, but nonetheless, that's a different issue. But as far as, you know, my understanding is this bill passed very quickly, it was like a...
I don't want my time to run out. So you're saying to me and the general public, as they view this later in the afternoon, that we are not clear as to what to expect or not to expect, who's going to pay for it, how we're going to pay for it? The other piece I even mentioned to my chairman, with the number of youth we have who are involved in criminal activities, how are we addressing that in this new law we have? Or does it only pertain to adults?
My understanding is that it only pertains to adults, however, that any adult, any youths that are transferred into the adult system, which could possibly happen, that would affect. The juvenile chapter... that would affect the juvenile chapter, what is it, chapter 7A?
I can't hear you.
I believe that the juvenile code is, still remains the same that it is currently. I don't believe there were changes to that. I may be wrong. Am I wrong on that, Sonya?
No, I think this piece of legislation, it is specific to the adult population. And I think, you know, to your other question about the process, just to Judge Wiggins' point, is this, the legislative process on this was, it was not the typical process. And I know Lisette is, was not able to be here today, but she is continuing, she was very active in that process. She continues to monitor this bill and as well as the other activities that are going on or associated with it.
How many can we house in Charlotte across the street in the capacity of incarcerating?
We could house 2,000, but we need additional people to house those 2,000.
So you need staffing?
Staffing, yes, ma'am.
Is that my bill?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Commissioner Powell.
It seems like the spotlight is on the brokenness of, of all of this system and the chronic underfunding for, for so many years. And so, it's like Commissioner Altman said, because I have some of the exact same words, it's a bipartisan issue, it is a first-order priority. Public safety is so important. I believe that the state legislators had a good intention. I believe that when they wrote the law, they were hearing from so many people who were horrified. You hear law enforcement all the time say it's a revolving door. You read about who gets, you know, who's out on the street, how did they get out? It's scary for, it's scary for me to read sometimes, I'm like, how did they get out? And so, I believe they had good intentions. We were elected to be problem solvers. There is a disconnect, like, we've been funding what the state is responsible for at least 12 years, if not longer. We can ask Adrian for an analysis. But this year, we funded $8.3 million for the courts. That was a state responsibility. And I think that there are a lot of rural lawmakers who don't understand what we are going through in Mecklenburg County. They think that it's just a wealthy county. And so, we are elected to solve problems, not fight with each other. And how can we work with state legislatures to show them the impact, the potential impact on us, the potential impact on quality of life in Mecklenburg County if we have to dedicate this amount of funding to, as, you know, like, quite often, a lot of this is state responsibility, not all of it, but a lot of it. How can we work with them to make sure that Sheriff McFadden is included in input? That like law enforcement, the experts are included in the input? How do, like, I feel like we should require, like, or request some kind of listening session to where they hear us, because it is maddening to think that it's an unfunded, unfunded, unfunded mandate, but we were elected to solve problems. So let's like, you know, reach out to them and say, let's have a talk, because the impact on Mecklenburg County and quality of life could be grim, and the long-term impact will be grim. And we are really important to North Carolina. So, and then Commissioner YTI had another question, and I'll ask it for her. There's, or I won't ask it, I'm sorry. I won't ask it, I was trying to slide it.
I tried, good try.
I tried, I tried.
You tried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll say this, I, I agree with you 99.99% of the time, and this is that one little smidgen where I'm somewhat disconnected, because-
Thank you.
-I don't believe that this was rooted in good intentions. I think it was rooted in reaction, but I, it's hard for me to make that, that leap, but I, I do want to believe that. We'll know if it's rooted in good intentions if the appropriate changes are made, because what I see from the presentations, and it's been said, and I hate to sound redundant, but you have increased workload, we're taking officers that we need offline, they're becoming Uber and Lyft drivers. That's not what we need them for, if we go back to your point about our number one responsibility being safety. And so, I agree 1,000% that we need to continue to advocate and, and speak to those folks in the General Assembly and help them understand the impact, but we can't do it individually. We have to do it with the other 99 counties that are also impacted in a similar fashion that are taking on the same burden. And so, I, I believe that we should lean in that way and find that collaboration point to be able to move this forward. And I, and if it is rooted in good intentions, we'll see, we'll get a funding, we'll, we'll get the funding that we need, we won't be at 2.8%. We'll come to something that really shows the respect for the communities across North Carolina, not just Mecklenburg County. But 2.8% doesn't, doesn't reflect that at this point, in my opinion. And so, with that being said, we know that you all have, all of you all in here have a very difficult job. We, as a community, have a very difficult job. We're going to be, we're forced to make some very difficult choices moving forward with respect to our priorities, as Commissioner Meyer raised, and it's a very fair point. And so, Mr. Manager, I don't envy you and what you have to deliver, sir, because this is going to be extremely challenging when you couple that with everything else that we're dealing with as a, as a community. And with that being said, what I'd like to do, I'm going to entertain, before you, I don't want you all to move, I just want to take care of some procedural business very quickly. Colleagues, what I, what I'd like to do, we do have our public defender, district attorney, and our judge of probate. And knowing that we have a hard stop, I'd like to entertain a motion for us to forego commissioner reports this meeting. Second, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And so, what I would like to do, and, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to apologize in advance to our judge of probate, our, our public defender and district attorney, but I'm sure there is something that you would want to say while you're here, and I want to give you space to come up and deliver 60 seconds prior to adjournment. And I would ask you all to stay as well, because you may have something to close with. And I apologize for the truncated time for, for you all, but I did want to give you space.
No problem, Chair. We're used to, as, as defense lawyers, being time limited by judges. What I think that is hidden here, it's not right out front, is the time suck for the defense bar, including my lawyers. When you have an overcrowded jail, understaffed jail, who's asked to move that many more people around inside the building with the same understaffed number of people they have, it takes longer for every single jail visit when we go to see clients. So the combination here is a bill that is going to cause more jail visits and each visit taking longer. We already way underwater. We haven't had a new position added since 2002, when we accepted 12,500 clients. Last year, we accepted 17,800.
Just real quickly, first of all, it's good to be before you again. I think that I can connect with both the comments from Commissioner Powell as well as Commissioner Darrell. This is, there are many things in here that are in accordance with the expectations from the public about people who have been charged with violent crimes, people who have, are repeat offenders, and making sure that there is serious consideration given before those folks are released. Yet, we're all going to sit down for Thanksgiving dinner, and we're all going to have, you expect to have growing families before that table. And what we got from the General Assembly at this point is 10 new spoons, without more bowls, more plates, more cups, and everything else. And so, I, I'm appreciative of the fact that there are more people to do the work of prosecutor, but this is a system thing, and there are more system demands. And it's going to be important to connect with people in other jurisdictions who also are going to have increased needs because of these increased demands, even though it hits them a little bit differently. So I would encourage you to connect with other counties, because I expect there's going to be a lot of need across the board.
That's right.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Elisa Chingary, Clerk of Superior Court. Judge Wiggins said that we are prepared for Monday. My thought is that we are bracing for Monday, as you do when there is a hurricane or a tragic storm that is coming. I have stood before this board on a number of occasions and talked about Mecklenburg County Clerk's Office being the most under-resourced of all 100 counties. That stands. So we will be the most impacted by our ability and capacity to take on more work. Our work includes working with the magistrate, the judges, the DAs, the public defenders, every actor in this court system. And I can just give you one example. We started this year with some of our clerks being in court in the late hours. We're talking after 6:00, after 7:00, after 8:00, after 9:00, and I think we heard at one point after 10:00. Our working mothers cannot afford that. The economy, those who have second jobs cannot afford that. This is more than our system will be able to take.
So thank you all, wanted to say thank you for your work. We continue to stand up the ready to be great partners, and we know that we're in this thing together. So thank you all for being here today.
Thank you.
And also, I would like to recognize Judge Archie that I saw earlier. Will you stand, Judge? One of our other elected colleagues, thank you for being here. Mr. Manager, I think that concludes everything.
That is, you know, the items on your agenda for this afternoon.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.